Hi Kim, can you hear us? Okay, you can just shake it. You're on mute, but I'll remind you before you give your report, okay? We'll wait for Mr. Smith.
All right, well, let's go ahead and get started. All right, so the first item of the day is the Boardman approval.
This is, this is Amy. I move to approve the May board minutes. This is Nicole, I second.
All right, any other questions or further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Next up, we have our support group updates, starting with PTO.
So we have Ms. Kim Shields, who is our new high school PTO president. So just need to take yourself off mute and you're ready to roll, Kim. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Um, well, the PTO is very excited. We are shifting to our summer priorities this week, and the top three initiatives that we're focusing on these next few weeks are our parent ambassador program, formally referred to as the Buddy Family Program. We have already closed signups for this. We have a lot of families interested, and the main purpose is the same as what the Buddy Family Program was for, just, you know, having these families represent LNC and connecting with new families as the main focus. Combined with that, we're also in the works of planning a summer event, which would be a joint event across all three campuses. And we will tie in this parent ambassador program, attract hopefully a lot of our new families and existing families to come to this event to mix and mingle and hopefully have a good time. And lastly, we are working on meeting to review and approve the grants that have been submitted to us by all three campus, you know, all the teachers on all three campuses. So we're excited to finish reviewing the requests that have been made, and we want to quickly get back to those teachers to let them know, you know, if and when they can move ahead with whatever it is that they are looking to do. And that's really all I have right now, but we're very excited and we're looking to, really looking forward to having a really fun event. If any of you would like to join us, we would love that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Shields, and welcome, by the way. Thank you for writing the update and look forward to some of the great things that you and the rest of the PTO will do in the coming months, weeks, years.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our athletic boosters update. Mr. Schlegel.
Good evening. Hope everyone's doing well. We've had an exciting month in the sport world. So we, we had two of our track athletes get state medals, and that would be Blaze and Lily. And then we had Miles, for the first time, we had a field event place. He came in eighth, which is awesome because we've never had a field event athlete place in the state meet. Our tennis team came in, they went to the final eight, lost in the final eight to a very strong Hickory team. Our men's lacrosse brought home their first state championship two weeks ago. And then we have women's soccer, who will be heading to the state championship Saturday morning up in Cary. So it has been very exciting, and on top of that, we have broken ground on the field house, and I don't know if we'll talk about that later, but that is very exciting for the athletic program as well. So things are starting to slow down a little bit finally, but we're amping up for the fall season. So we've just gotten up the fall child information on our website. We've opened family ID, and trials will start August 1st for high school, and it will start, I believe, August 15th for most of our middle school teams. So that's where we're at.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schlegel, and good luck to the lady nights on Saturday morning. All right, next up, we have our school and state update, Ms. Stein.
Thank you. So as Mr. Schlegel alluded to, the end of the year is always really fun, and this one was probably particularly enjoyable just because it, we continued to get back into a more normal rhythm. So after two years, some of the events and different things that had, we hadn't been able to do, or we hadn't been able to do to the full capacity we were, and from seeing kids really enjoying field day to the kindergarten, fourth grade, eighth grade, moving on up ceremonies, they were all wonderful. I mentioned earlier to the board, but I think for the public, it's good to know that the fourth grade class that was moving on up is our class that started with us as kindergartners. So that, that is super exciting. So we're excited to get the class of 2030 over. And then a huge shout out to, and not just because she's in the room, Melissa Skyer and Christine Casillas and Mr. Smith, who not only did exceptionally good planning again this year, but also got to be weather prognosticators and made the absolute right call when it came to that. So I've asked Mr. Smith just to talk a little bit about senior class, the transition and graduation, because it was pretty darn awesome.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, the, you know, I want to open with just the folks at Atrium Health Ballpark and within the Kannapolis Cannonballers Organization. We're nothing short of incredible, and the correspondence that we had at the beginning of the week last week, I mean, they shared the same sentiment with us, and they stated, we want to do everything in our power to have the event as scheduled Friday night, May 27th. And even if you think back a couple of days ago, that parental downpour that we even had that morning, we were still, because of their hard work and all the teamwork and collaboration, we were able to still have our ceremony go is exactly as it would have been if, if there was no rain at all. And if you know anything about baseball, especially minor league baseball, you know that that field is like their baby. And the fact that we were able to even still have the same procession coming down third baseline to get their diploma and shake my hand, shake everybody's hand, and then go up first baseline was nothing short of incredible. And the atmosphere, the environment, it was a celebration of our class of 2020, which it should have been, but it was just a fun night. And I can speak on behalf of a handful of other folks, and we've received so much positive feedback, not just from folks within LNC, but folks that are extended family that may have been traveling from other places that, you know, this may have been their only interaction with Lincoln Memorial Charter, or, you know, they may have been coming to see one of many graduations or in graduation season. Just, you know, the, the way, the format of it, the personalization, the intimacy, and yet the celebration, the the length of it, I mean, it's just all been positive. So I know Mrs. Skyer can hear me, just to echo what Mrs. Stein said, her and Christine Casillas, the many, many, many staff members that had some element of involvement with rehearsal, with the the ceremony itself, and then even afterward with handing out diplomas and things like that. So it was a true celebration. We had a lot of staff that were able to enjoy that as mom or dad, and I'm glad that they were able to take that opportunity. It was, in addition to the attendance there and the live stream, it was the largest attendance graduation that we have ever had Lincoln Memorial Charter's history. In addition, I can't see, so I don't know if Ms. Bedford is there, is the first live rendition of the National Anthem that opened at us by Ms. Bedford's daughter, Morgan Bedford, who absolutely set the tone with an incredible performance. So 182 graduates walked across that stage, shook my, shook my hand, and are now considered LNC alumni. So unless there's any other questions, I, I think that gives a high level update of how fun last Friday was.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And one other thing I'll say about that is a lot of our staff members, not just high school staff, first of all, kudos to the high school staff, because it does take many hands to, to make that all work and, and line kids up and organize them and do all the things that need to happen. But many staff attend from elementary through all the way high school, and at the end of the ceremony, they stand on the way out so that the kids, we used to do it on the way in, and now we've kind of done it on the way out, which was super cool. And just to see the, the kids hugging some of their past teachers and things was, and administrators were very cool. So it was a, it was a neat tradition. Oh, yeah, and Dr. Kendrick was the bomb. Yeah. Yeah.
The three Rs?
Yeah.
I, I'd just like to chime in on what you just said, Ms. Stein, which is that was incredible to see, just the kids coming off of the field, a line on both sides, like imagine a walkway, teachers line up on both sides, kids are coming off, hugging, crying, like hugging teachers, middle school teachers, high school teachers, I mean, you name it, like just, if you just take a step back and think about the impact that those folks had on those kids, that's phenomenal to see and experience.
Yeah. Well, if I were, yeah. We wish it was, it's still cool. It's super cool. So, so anyway, congratulations, Mr. Smith, and to your whole staff and the, the class of 2022. It was, it was really a great night. Couple other just small things, wanted to confirm that we just finalized an agreement with Novant Health to again partner with them to have a certified mental health professional on staff with us again. Dr. Danielle Graham will remain in that capacity, and just love the partnership with Novant. They are so sincere in wanting to actually be in partnership and offering to do things that they know are in the best interest of kids. So that is, that has been a really great working relationship. We are moving towards second interviews for the middle school principal search. It, these are very big shoes that Dr. Graham has left, and but I, I am very excited to say that we had a very strong pool of candidates. And Ms. Holland, Mr. Mabody, and I believe nine other teachers, parents, and folks helped to, to do the first round of interviews. We've narrowed it down to our top two, and I hope to have that buttoned up here in the next week and a half. So more, more to come on that. And then I just want to again share, I'm sure you guys saw it in the board notes, there is a bill that's moving through the legislature right now called the Parent Bill of Rights. It, I am, I'm just gonna come right out. I'm not in support in any way of the way that it is currently written. It is meant to be divisive. I think it's meant to be political. It will probably not pass. It'll prob, well, it'll pass the legislature. It'll probably be vetoed. And unfortunately, you know, obviously, we have a strong tradition of partnering with our parents, and that bill does not encourage partnerships and encourages an adversarial relationship. So I just, when those kinds of things come through, I want you guys to be aware and make sure that you are able to see what it is that they're doing, and certainly happy to talk to anybody as to some of the background and how we could be more constructive. But, you know, I would certainly, again, encourage our parents and anybody to reach out to teachers. It's, it's really truly a partnership, and they're happy to do that, but it's, it's unfortunate to see that. So just to kind of get that on your guys' radar, and that's all I have.
Sadly, I think the Senate passed that today. Yeah. All right, enough said about that. Thank you, Ms. Stein, for your updates. All right, next up, we have our finance update. So we'll start with the budget amendments. Is that you, Ms. Wilson?
It is.
Second.
Yep, just waiting for Shannon to. Alrighty, board, so I'm coming to you then tonight to seek votes on two things. The first one will be budget amendment number five. This will be the last budget amendment for the 2122 fiscal year. So Shannon, if you want to go to the next slide. Um, pretty much, this is just a quick little shore up, close out. There's a few new things. We added in the bootspools and barbecue revenue and expenditures. Sarah did a really good job with that event. She, you know, I don't think she's here. I want to say she may have netted about 20,000 little for that. So kudos to her, and thank you all for your part in that, too. And then there's the other side of the revenue that's coming in. We received the grant from the DHHS for the elementary school contracted nurse, Nurse Denise. And the nice thing is, we weren't able to use all of that funding, and they are going to roll that grant over to next year. So we at least have her funded for most of next year also. The correlating expenditures, obviously, for bootspools and barbecue, and for the nurse, we are also going to purchase some staff shirts for our 25th year celebration coming up next year. We've got some summer construction projects. I spoke about that in the last budget amendment, but we have some final numbers. We're going to do some improvements at the high school and in our community room over at the middle school, and then we had some bus repairs that needed to be done. So you'll see the, it's taking about 40,000 down from, from, from the net surplus. Nothing major, but just needed you guys to vote so we could close this year up. Any questions?
This is Amy, I'll second.
Okay, any other questions or further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, I think we're back with Ms. Wilson.
To me again. All right, and I think Shannon gave you guys this in your board packet, so I'm not going to read every slide. You guys can go back through. Just a quick funding overview. So when the state legislator and the governor signed the budget, it was a biannual budget, so it was for two years. But what they can go in during short session is go in and make changes. So that's currently what's going on, but nothing has been voted on yet. So we have continued our conservative approach into budgeting, using a 1% to 2% increase in state revenue. We have seen the Mecklenburg County proposed budget. They increased the CMS budget by almost $20 million. That was half of what CMS requested. But based on that, we should see about a 2% increase in our per pupil allotment from Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. We are still working on spending our ESA funding. If you'll recall, we received two big rounds. The first one was 180 per student. As of May 31st, we had spent about 122,000 of the 400,000 that we received, and all of those funds will have to be spent by September 30th of 2023. And in Dr. Graham's new role, she's going to make sure that I get that done. And then in the second round of ESA funding, we got $400 per pupil, which was almost 900,000, of which we've spent about 100,000. But those will have to be spent by September 30th of 2024. We, you will not see those in the budget that's being presented. I will come and do the rollover in the first budget amendment. So it's, it's just going to be a net neutral for the revenue. There'll be correlating expenditures, but until we know what we're rolling over, I didn't put it in the budget that's being presented today. Next slide. Here's just some historical data on state, and as you guys know, over 87% of our students come from CMS, so I've put CMS funding. The big jump for CMS was based purely on they overestimated their student population. So when they had to go back and do actuels, we received more funding than we initially thought, because obviously their denominator was wrong. So there we go, next slide. So here are my budget assumptions. We did a 1.5% increase for state revenue, 2% for local CMS. Our Knights Fund revenue does include the projections for the Elevate campaign contributions. And as I previously mentioned, the federal COVID relief funds will be added by a budget amendment once we roll over those numbers from this year. On the expenditure side, we've, we've built in the step salary increases for all staff and a 1% increase for all non-teaching staff, which will be awarded in December 22. As historically we've done, we always like for the budget to come in first, so that if we need to make any adjustments, we can. We're going to keep a close eye and see what comes out of short session, and obviously, if there's anything that needs to be pushed down to the teachers, we'll be sure that we, we are in compliance with that. So state retirement is still continuing to increase at an alarming rate. So it's a 5.7, 5.7% increase over last year. Health, 5.4. We've added the director of academics position. We saw some increases in our custodial services and ground services of around 5%, and then there's 1.4 million in capital expenditures for our normal tech refresh, CapEx, the town of Flandersville baseball park, base build, field partnership, and then the field house. So with all of that said, here is a quick summary of our budget. We're looking at about 22.2 million in revenue and 23.5 million in expenditures. And this will be the first time while Haley's been at LSE that I am presenting a deficit budget. But if Shannon will go to the next slide, if you pull out the Elevate campaign contributions and the Elevate project cost, you will see that we are actually going to be at a net surplus of $481,000. So the reason for the deficit is that the school is having to front the cost of the field house until those campaign contributions come in. So just didn't want you guys to be too alarmed there. Again, I'm not going to go over this, but 62% of our revenue is from state, about 31% is from local, and on the expenditure side, about 70% of our expenditures are for salary and benefits, and then the next highest one is 11% for rent and debt service. And I just want to call out for our board members, that 11%, local LEAs don't consume that. They're able to issue debt to build their buildings. So that is something that as a charter school, we have to build into our annual budget. So just wanted to highlight that again. Um, next slide, Shannon, sorry. On here, you guys will see, I always take the amended budget for the year and analyze it against the proposed. It's kind of all over the place, because this year has been weird. We've had a ton of bonuses that have come in from the state that we don't know if it's going to happen next year. We did, we finalized Rice Together COVID funding. So when I put this together, I was like, ah, this is kind of all over the place. But if you guys want any additional detail, there's some explanations to the side that kind of hit it at high level. So for fund balance, we ended last year with a fund balance of around 10.5 million. We're projected to end this year of a fund balance of about 11.5. So even with that deficit, we're still at an 11.2 million dollar fund balance. So still a very sizable, healthy fund balance in about 22, 221 days cash on hand. And then finally, as part of our debt covenants, we have to meet a debt service coverage ratio of 1.1 if we have 75 days cash on hand, which we do. And you'll see the budget right now, we're looking at about 1.45. So we will cover that covenant, too. And that is the 2223 budget. Any questions?
Hey Haley, just a, a quick question on the fund balance roll forward.
Yeah.
Just want to be clear, is that net of the investments, or does that include the investment?
That includes the investment.
Okay. All right. Any questions on, well, actually, any other questions or any questions on the budget? Yeah?
Me either.
Are there any motions out there?
Yeah, moves that we approved the budget for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Okay. All right, any other questions, further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. All right, next up, we have some new business coming into play. So first item is the board term extension slash leadership. Let's see, are you leading off with that, or am I leading off with that?
I'll take the first one. We have two board membership recommendations up for a vote tonight. The first is both Jared Tilly and Richly Chapman have completed their first full term as board members. And I'm happy to share that they're being recommended for a second term, and so we'll be asking for a vote on that tonight.
You made the cut. Okay.
This is Amy. I move to approve Jared and Ridgely for a second three-year term.
And this is Elizabeth, I'll second.
All right, thank you, ladies. Any other questions or further discussion? Anybody want to interview them? Make sure they're worthy? No?
They didn't run, that's good.
All right, that's step one, right? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Congratulations. All right, so next up, we have the board leadership. So as I'm sure all of you are aware, this will be my last board meeting. So in replacement of me, basically, we are stair stepping. So the, the nomination would be for Leslie to assume the chair role, and for Amy to assume the vice chair role. I don't think they need any introduction. So we'll probably just move forward with a motion.
I move that we approve Leslie in the board chair role and Amy in the vice chair.
This is generally our second.
Okay, any other questions or further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, congratulations, ladies. All right. Next on the agenda is the elementary school land acquisition. Do we have a motion out there? This is something for, that was discussed in a close session earlier pursuant to Section 143, 318.11a5.
Yeah, a move that we authorize the board chair to execute a land purchase contract up to $2 million.
This is Elizabeth, I'll second.
Okay, any other questions or further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Thank you, motion carries. All right, Mr. Kilpatrick, some policy updates.
Thanks, Rick. Shannon and I will, will tag them on this. I'll start with Title IX, and Shannon can handle the, handle the student handbook update. We talked a bit about Title IX last board meeting. Again, it's a federal law that prohibits discrimination based on sex and gender, and the real impact is with respect to sexual harassment. Every administration, every presidential administration has the ability to update the rules when it comes to Title IX, and, and the Biden administration did that in 2020. That's required us to make some changes to our Title IX policy. For the most part, it's, it's, it's requiring us to put a process in place when it comes to claims that a student makes for violation of Title IX. So it's a, I think you have a copy of the, the policy in your board packets, a 16-page policy that kind of outlines. Like I said, the process, we have to appoint a Title IX coordinator, which is Dr. Graham. We have Title IX investigators who will actually do the fact finding, and those are going to be the building principals and assistant principals. And then we have a decision maker, which will be superintendent. So I don't know if anybody has any, any questions about the policy generally, but again, we, we've worked with an attorney who specializes in this to put it together and believe it complies with the new regulations. So if no questions, but I think a motion to approve the policy.
This is Jen, I'll motion to approve the Title IX policy.
This is Leslie, I second.
Any other questions? Any other questions, further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick.
So I, as Greg said, I'll I'll tackle some of the stuff in the Student Handbook. We treat this as policy. It comes back to the board every year for approval because we do make some changes. So at a high level, some of the the bigger changes, we have been required by the state to include a dispute resolution process for our McKinney-Vento students. For those of you who are unaware, McKinney-Vento students are those who are economically disadvantaged and are homeless. And so we provide support to those students so that they can successfully attend school and have what they need to to do that here. And a family can apply for this designation. And if they were to be denied, there has to be a dispute resolution for that. So that that has been included in the handbook. So if a family needed to know what's available to them and how to apply for that, and if there were concerns about being not provided those services, what to do with that. Another thing is, we made a slight change to the Student Behavioral Code where we included some of the Title IX language as well as expanding weapons to include weapons facsimiles. Because there have been quite a bit of things in social media where people are using airsoft guns and different other guns that that could cause disruption to the school environment. So that's been added. The Title IX policy link and the coordinator's name and the basic process, not all seventeen or eighteen pages, has been also included for reference for our families and students. And then there are some wording changes and additions to each of the building supplement areas that come up throughout the year just for clarification so that families clearly can refer to that and know what what to expect or where to get support or anything that has to do specifically with the building. So those are are some of the brief changes. The entire Student Handbook with the edits is in the shared drive, which I know the board has already looked at. But at a high level, those are the the big changes that we're recommending to be included. So it can be posted for our families.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. Sorry, motion up.
Oh, I I motion that we approve the amendments to the Student Handbook.
This is Amy, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, ladies. Any questions for other discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Think we have one final motion left.
Actually. You know what, let me start and then you start. Yeah, thank you. All right, I feel like I need to stand up for this. So Rick, why don't you stand with me? And Shannon strategically placed some Kleenex in between us. I'm not sure if that's for you or for me, but thank you, Rick. It has been a big commitment over the last six years. And and thank you to your family who's also on Zoom tonight watching, if you noticed, for their support and allowing you to be here. And thank you in particular for the last two years. Your leadership has been incredible during a very challenging time. And can't can't thank you enough for your steadfastness for steering this ship through choppy waters, as one of our other members described, and doing it with grace and thoughtfulness and a sense of humor. And you've been a wonderful mentor to me personally. You leave some really big shoes to fill and you will be missed. And so I have a plaque for you and a gift card. And you can, you could read this later. But the board has some thoughts they wanted to share with you. And and thank you for your leadership and your partnership as you've served on this board. And so you've really made an incredible impact to the school and to all of us personally on the board. So we wanted to do something a little extra special for you. And and we have some creative minds on the board, so. Okay, okay. No, don't sit, don't sit. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it over to Mrs. Johnson, who's put together a fun tribute for Rick. All right, I gotta get the mic closer to me. All right, so Rick, I I have a script here because it's very specific what I'm going to say. You've dedicated six years to this board and this school, and we are so grateful for your time and your commitment and your leadership. So in honor of the six years, we want to take a minute to acknowledge six, just six of the many board accomplishments during your tenure that are direct result of your involvement and leadership. So as part of your legacy, Rick, our middle and high school students have technology at their hands to prepare them for college and beyond. I can't do all of that at once. All right, why can't I click ahead? There we go. Okay. And we, at the school, we've made meaningful advances in our commitment to live out our mission to learn, lead and serve with leadership and action fully implemented in all three schools, symbolized by this permanent artwork in the elementary. There we are. You see us? You also, very importantly, facilitated our very first bond issuance, which helped finance key capital expenditures and secured our financial future. So Rick, thank you for the money and for making it rain. Okay, we're not done. That I think is three. So you've led us through some amazing capital developments, not the least of which is a brand new elementary school, which if the video will play, you can see us coming out of the slide. It's supposed to loop, but it's not. Yeah, we all, there's a stub toe, a little brush burn and other things happening. Okay, and but that's just the beginning. Since then, we've done upgrades to the middle school office, the high school common area, and of course. Thanks to you. We got a brand new. And finally, although this one isn't as fun to talk about, while COVID certainly thwarted some of our strategic goals, we would be remiss not to acknowledge your thoughtful, unbiased leadership during this critical time, so. So that was just a little fun, Rick, but we honestly mean it. Thank you for your leadership on these and so many other important issues.
Thank you. You dropped it off. Just, thank you. It's, I was telling a couple of folks, it's it's really surreal moment kind of walking in tonight, knowing this will be my last board meeting that I'll be on. I'll call it the side of the table, right? You know, if I look back on the last six years, incredible accomplishments, things that'll outlive me, which means a lot. If I think back to the original intent, I can still remember out at the beach with my family vacationing and I'm standing in line for a bagel and I see an email come across that said, hey, we're looking for board members, somebody with a finance background. My, hmm, I think I can do that. And about then, my wife texts me, she's like, hey, did you see the email? So we talked about it and and ultimately I decided to apply. And incredible journey, credible accomplishments, just incredibly thankful growth personally, growth professionally. But I think, you know, if I set all those accomplishments aside, I think the thing that I'm most proud of is the folks that are sitting around this table. Because I had in some way, shape or form a hand in hiring every single one of you. And I think you guys are poised to take this to the next level. And while there are things that I, you know, leave a mark on, I think you guys have the ability to to really jumpstart it and take it even further. And no pressure, just, you know, build upon it, do a little better than than what I was able to do. But just huge thank you. And of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my family as well for the last six year of sacrificing your time with me so that I could help support this great organization, this great institution, all these awesome folks here in the room. And I made it through that without crying. So. Do I have to take the necklace off or? All right. Is there a motion out there?
This is Jen, I will motion to end the meeting.
All right, thank you, ladies. All those are, well, should we have any further discussion? No? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, motion carries.